This time we'll call the special meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court to order. This meeting was called at the request of a majority of the court to address a few personnel matters. There is one potential issue involving a bid on the agenda. We do have a special guest for the second meeting in a row, and that's Pike County Attorney, Howard Keith Hall. Keith, it's good to see you here, sir. Always, always good to have you here, and we greatly appreciate it. This time I'd like to ask Commissioner Brian Booth to say the invocation.
Dear Lord, as we come before you this evening, dear heavenly Father, Lord, continue to have me follow to watch over this court, dear heavenly Father, watch over this county. Continue to have me follow to help us to make every right decisions we make for this county, dear heavenly Father, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Thacke.
Here.
Commissioner Booth.
Here.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed, and I'd like to ask Mr. William Spears if he would say the, or lead us, I tell you, well, we've got a special guest. Let's let Mr. Howard Keith Hall, Pike County Attorney, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to reflect on the United States of America, through the bond for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
First item on the agenda is awarding of bids. Is the court had an opportunity to review the bids for the installation of the chiller that we discussed last week?
Yes, Judge, we have.
Okay, is the court willing or ready to make a motion on that, or would you, would the members prefer that we pass over that to the next regular meeting?
I think the members are ready to vote on it, Judge.
All right, all right. What would be the recommendation or motion of any member of the court with regard to awarding bid number 20-2020 for the installation of the chiller here in the courthouse?
I think the bid to thermal equipment in the price of $29,800 is the bid, and I think that's a bid that Mr. Fannin approved that we should do.
Greg, would you come up to the table, please? And while we're dealing with this, I just want to remind everyone, at 5:00 today, Governor Beshear's executive order took effect, and that requires masks in public, in businesses, unless you can maintain social distancing. As I understand, we have the members spread out. We need to ask everyone here to make sure they're at least six feet apart, and it is something that we know is an inconvenience to people, but we have seen a significant number of increase, or significant increase in number of COVID-19 cases, and we'll discuss that here in a minute, but I just wanted to remind everyone. So, Mr. Fannin, what was your recommendation on this?
My recommendation would award the bid to thermal equipment from Prestonsburg for bid price of 29.8.
And that was the low bid, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Thacke. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thacke?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
No.
Judge Jones?
Yes, I'd like to explain my vote. This bid, the members of the court had an opportunity to look at this, and in the past, the Pike County Fiscal Court didn't always, there was even one occasion that they built a building with over $500,000 in taxpayer money that was not even put out for bid. It is required by Kentucky law that certain items for procurement be put out to bid, and one of those would be something along the lines of installing a chiller. Professional services such as engineering, accounting, legal work, those types of things do not require a bid. They can be procured by the court, insurance can be procured by the court. Even this court went to the, went to the market and looked for the least costly alternative for insurance when we placed the insurance. And let me say this, we have a bid here, and by law, we are required to accept the lowest evaluated bid, and this bid was the lowest bid by about $1,700. It's not Ray Jones's money, it's not the fiscal court's money, this is taxpayer money. And just like when we bought equipment, we looked for the best price. Greg, I appreciate everything you've done. You've, you've more than saved your salary this year alone and what you've saved the county because we've put some attention to detail. But we have to award it to the lowest bid unless it is an in-county vendor, and in that situation, there's a 5% variance. We are trying to spend every penny we can in Pike County, Kentucky, but if the bid is more than 5% above the lowest bid, then the lowest bidder wins. And when the auditors come in and they look at these bids, there's not going to be a question about somebody, you know, monkey business or steering something to somebody. We're going to follow the law, and the law in this case is that the bid will be awarded to thermal equipment as the lowest bidder. Wish they were in Pikeville, Kentucky, maybe that's something we can talk to them about, about locating up here in Pike County. But with that being said, I thought the public deserved an explanation. This is something we took up at the last court meeting, and as long as I'm judge executive, we're going to follow the procurement code to the letter of the law. So with that being said, Mr. Hall, would you please instruct the court on the, we knew to have a need for executive session to discuss a brief personnel matter, actually two personnel matters, and let me explain this. We had a couple omissions at the court meeting on Tuesday that didn't, for some reason, were inadvertently left off of the personnel actions that were taken at that meeting, and that's why we're having this quick meeting. Shouldn't take us very long. So, Mr. Hall, would you please instruct the public in the court on the relevant provisions of the Kentucky Open Meetings Law as it relates to personnel matters?
Yes, Judge.
If I could interrupt for just one minute, I have one other thing I want to bring before the court. It was about our annual recycling grant. We did get the grant approved. We had got some quotes to buy a Avant 528 Kubota front end loader and to buy some four and a half yard mini cycler cardboard recycler, recycle containers for our schools and some of our business. We're approved for that money. That money is in our account. That's the only thing it can be spent for. We're buying it through Sourcewell Co-op Buying Contract, but I thought because of the amount of money that was being spent, it might be, should be brought before the court for approval.
So...
What is that mini cycler? Is that one they can pull around, Greg?
No, it's, it's a, I don't think, it sets by itself. We put it to schools where they can put their cardboard in, and then we pick it up every so often. There's, we're going to purchase 10 of them. I think primarily they go to our schools, and there's some other businesses that use a lot of cardboard.
Okay.
We'll place there. And also this little mini front end loader at a cost of $36,099, which does have a grapple bucket on it. It also has an anti-slip valve, so when it swivels, turns, it doesn't have a wheel hop.
I've not looked at this yet, Greg. I wasn't aware this was going to be on here today. Maybe when we're in executive session, I can have an opportunity to review it, and I'm sure that these guys are going to want to take a look at it as well. So let's just go ahead and do this. We'll come back, and we can always come back to this. So, Mr. Hall.
Yes, Judge. The, as pointed out, the KRS 61.810 gives us grams to, to, their exclusions to the open meetings, open meetings statute, and there are several sections, but the one the fiscal court relies on regularly and so forth today is to discuss litigation either against or for the county, and also to discuss a specific person or personnel.
Is there a motion entering to executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Thacke, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thacke?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we will stand in recess for executive session. We'll return at the call of the chair. I'll call the court back to order. Is there a motion to adjourn from executive session? A motion by Commissioner Thacke, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thacke?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. It is my motion to approve hiring Ronnie Dotson as a heavy equipment operator at Roadlot Two at a 5H rate of pay effective 6/29/20. My motion to move Brian Fields from Solid Waste to Roadlot Two as a weed mower at a 3H rate of pay effective 6/30/20, and to amend the court order from July 7th to state that Dalton Waller, John Willis, Christian Mounts, and Michael Harden are temporary employees. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thacke?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Sharon, please just briefly explain the Big Sandy Regional Recycling Program. Now, that's a multi-county program, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
We are the administrator this year.
Yeah, we're typically the administrator because since I've been here, we've had the most money on it. The county that has the most money on the grant administers the grant, so we did last year and this year.
Okay, so these items that are on this list, will all that stay in Pike County, or does some of that go to another county?
$52,099 that Greg wanted approved to go ahead and purchase, that's ours, and then McGoffin County will have theirs. They've got, yeah, they've got trailers on theirs.
So what you're talking about, the 10 mini cycler cardboard 4.5 yards and the Kubota will be ours?
Oh, yeah, that's strictly ours.
Okay.
It's just if you go in with another, it's called Big Sandy, one of the five counties, you'll always get funded.
Well, hang on, hang on one second.
Okay.
The question we had, the other items, the three 14 by six by six trailers and the two five by eight trailers, and the Baggett System recycling bags, freestanding racks, will those be distributed to the other counties?
The trailers all belong to McGoffin County. The Baggett System, they did an adjustment and took it off. Those were ours, but I've got an email in to Ty Collins right now to try to get those put back on because they're on an approved list, so I don't know why they took them off.
Okay, so the items on the list of the grant, and we probably technically don't need approval of this because it is a grant money, but it would be my motion that we approve the purchase of the Avant 528 Kubota three-cycle bucket loader and the 10 Pro Trainer 4.5-yard mini cyclers for the stated price of $36,099 for the Kubota and $16,000 even for the Pro Trainer mini cycler cardboard 4.5 units. Those are again being purchased with the grant money that can only be used for that specific purpose, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So we don't want people thinking that we're just pulling money out of thin air.
No, it's for recycling program.
And if we don't spend that money, we lose that money.
Absolutely, it goes by.
All right, so that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thacke?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, we are into the last order, last orders of business. We have department supervisors comments. Mr. Fannin, you have anything?
No.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hall?
No, thank you.
Mr. Williamson? Mr. Kaiser? Jimmy, I have one question for you briefly. Could you just come up for a second? And this, maybe you can help me with this because I had a phone call on it today, and if it's not you, maybe it's Chuck. We had a lady call today who's got a blighted property that sits next to her property. It's an old trailer, old mobile home that's fallen in. Apparently a bunch of, you know, people are maybe even going into it, you know, looking for stuff to steal, or they're selling meth, those kind of things. I know we have an ordinance on the book that the county can declare a property blighted and tear it down and then sue the property owner, but apparently the owner of that property passed away. Are you familiar with that program?
No, but Chuck is, I think.
Chuck, come on up. Make sure the folks out here listening can hear you.
Actually, what they've done, Judge, is if, if we'd done a job like that, we would, it would, would go be a lien against the property, the property owner, if they didn't pay for the cleanup, but I don't know if the court can...
Try to collect the money that way.
Right.
Yeah, I think the ordinance says the county can sue the property owner, but...
Right.
We'll take a look at it.
Can we put a lien against the property for the money cleaning it up?
Judge Roland Case, when he was here at one time, and I remember which administration it was, we had that thing rolling pretty good, and I don't think we were enforcing the liens like we should have. Something happened, it kind of got away from us, and I don't know if it got too expensive or what, but it was a, I'll tell you what, people in the county, because you know how they can be, you know how people like to say mean stuff about the county government and good things, that was nothing but a real positive. People really appreciated it, and they would take pictures and publish them, and somehow it got away from us. I think we had one case where there was accusations that they were intentional. People were asking us to come do them simply because they thought that we do a better rate than the private companies would, and they were kind of like leaning on us to kind of, and there was one guy kind of invited you to come sue him because he thought he could sell it for less than he could go hire somebody to do it. He got it voluntarily. We had a little bit of that going on, and that kind of got, the program kind of went downhill after that, but in its peak, it was a real good, it was a real good program in its peak.
Sure was. It ended up being a cost to the county, too, is what happened.
You know, one, one thing we could do is amend that ordinance and let the county contract with a vendor, let the vendors bid on cleaning it up, and give the vendors, if they want, you know, whoever tears it down, give them a right to sue and get the money back. I mean, maybe we can look at something like that, you know, but Keith, I would also think that that was done at a time, you know, 10 years ago, the county was collecting 12-plus million a year in severance, coal and mineral severance, and this year we collected 1.4 million. So, I mean, we're 11 million short of where we were, and I think that was done during the Rutherford administration.
Most of the places that that was really beneficial was in areas where you'd had coal camps, and not necessarily just coal camps, but like Shelby Anne, I know there was a couple there with the mouth of dry fork that had just deteriorated down. Whether it was a neighbor immediately to your right, neighbor immediately to your left, and it was, generally if you're out in a big field, everybody eventually just sticks a match to it. You can't do that when you got a row of camp houses. You can't just go in there and strike a match to it or bring a dozer in. It's pretty hard, you know what I'm saying? I'm not a, I'm not a builder or a contractor, but when you try to pull a unit out, out of a row of houses, it's a little harder than if it's out in a big field. If it's in a big field, you know, you just take a dozer and just run through it or stick a match to it. You can't do that in kind of a, I don't want to call it an urban setting, but a coal camp type, when we have quite a few of those in the county where houses are in pretty tight together, that's where it was real, really effective.
Well, Keith, it's just, it's like right now, I've got this neighborhood in my district, and they're begging us to do something. I mean, kids play next to these places, and they're dilapidated, they're falling completely down. There's something that we're going to have to try to do about this.
And a lot of them become places for meth heads to deal meth.
Exactly.
We don't have it, we don't have it, go, I'm not going to brag on our county, but go to some other counties, and I won't mention any by name, but there's some coal camps in some counties real close to us, and every other house is abandoned and falling in, and then you'll see a real nice one, someone kept up, and then two bad ones, and then a nice one someone's kept up, and there's...
This was, when I was growing up, it was a very clean neighborhood, nice place, everything in it was nice, and they're complaining now about the structures are falling down around it, weeds, I mean, you know, and that makes it look bad for people that does come here and visit us.
It makes it look bad. You know, this county doesn't have zoning, and that's part of the issue we've got, too, is, you know, people can put junk cars and that kind of stuff all over their property, and nobody says anything, and, or you can't really do anything about it, and, you know, but we're going to take a look at this. I'm not sure if we have the financial resources to adequately address it, but Keith, I think you're, you're correct. I mean, there's communities, a lot of these houses were built in the '30s and '40s, when, you know, when these coal camps were built, maybe in the '20s, and they're falling in. And, you know, Virgie's the same way where I grew up. There's a lot of homes that were, I mean, you know, the structures are just old and dilapidated, so we're going to take a look and see what we can do, and, and we'll try to do that here, probably sometime in August, we'll sit down and try to get some, get some ideas on what we can and can't do on this. Thank you all.
Hey, Judge, I got a question for Chuck, Stephanie, both, she come up here.
Well, I've got a little situation with Solid Waste I've got to bring to the attention. It's made me furious. Last week, maybe two weeks, we've had this happen four, four or five, maybe five times. It's a dirty job, and our people's doing it, and they're doing a good job at it, but it makes me mad when we got customers in this county that won't pay, and when they don't put their garbage in a garbage can right, and then use the bathroom on top of it, and our employees have to pick that up, too. I don't know what we can do about this, but I know what I would do if I was driving that truck or picking that garbage up. I'd be knocking on your door.
They do, they actually go some bad...
This happened yesterday. It's happened, I know, four, maybe five times in the last two weeks.
I went up there to the place you're talking about, trying to find somebody to find out information on what's going on there, and we couldn't get anybody to come out. But we're going to stop picking up trash there until we get a, we get a call from somebody.
Well, if they want to complain, or they want to say something, then let them say it to me, because I'm the one sitting here saying this. That's not right for nobody in this county. I thought that we had better people in this county than that. That's just, it's disgusting.
Well, we've also got to address the needle issue, and we're going to have to pass a needle disposal ordinance, and that needs to be done immediately, and I think, William, are you working on that right now? So, before the first court meeting in August, we need to have a proposed ordinance that gives you three weeks or so to get something drafted on that, but we also need to look at potential fines or some type of violation if we can...
Jail time would be perfect for me. I, I mean, look, they, they worked their hind end off, and enough's enough. I mean, look, who, I mean, how low do you got to be to go take a dump in your garbage and let...
But I did go up there yesterday, Jason, couldn't get, couldn't find anybody, and Steve Asbury also went back and tried, we just, but we need to find...
I think it's two or three times in the past two weeks, too, to other places, you know, from what I can, what I've been told. But I mean, you know, enough's enough. I mean, it...
Well, another issue is people that want to get on Facebook and complain because their garbage didn't get picked up on the 1200 garbage bill. That's another problem, and, and I'll address that here in just a minute.
Like I said, that's been eating at me for the last two days anyway, and just, but, you know, we do need to find something.
Since I'm up here, let's remind everybody we're picking up trash tomorrow.
Yes.
On the Friday's run.
I'll, I'll take care, I'll go over there here in a minute.
But that's why I think our, our employees, I mean, they, the, the general public don't really realize what they have to put up with, you know, and that, that's not called for. I mean, that, there's...
All right, all right, let's move on. Ms. Fannin, over anything? Ms. Thacker? Mr. Spears? Larry? Anything from the landfill? Jimmy, anything else? Mr. Little, anything? All right, that, Mr. Hall, any comments, sir?
Thank you, sir.
Always good to have our county attorney here, and looking judicial as ever, as I might add.
I make it sound like I talk politics, but eventually you get beat or get thrown out of here. Watched a lot of friends go down over the years, and my time's coming, you know, we all get it eventually, and you have to leave, everybody has to leave their job eventually, but I'm, I'm heart sick when I think about leaving this building or this place or you people, and I just, it's become a big part of me, and you don't know what, I guess everybody's had a job for a long period of time, all of you. I'm, I'm not the only person who held a job for a long time. I'm probably been the most blessed person on earth to have as good a job as I've gotten, had as many people. I, I talked to county attorneys in other counties, and they talk about how miserable it is, how hard it is. I have a ball, I absolutely, because you just got great people coming to work every day, from the garbage people talking here about picking up the garbage, proudly of the city and the county zigzagging in and out, and those guys tell me how, I'm like, look, I'm not going to put my garbage out a day early because I don't want to pick everybody. They say, oh, we cover for each other. If it's a bad day, those guys like each other, the city, the county, they say, oh, we'll cover for each other. If I see something stuck out there on the side, I'll grab it. People don't realize you got that kind of workers out there and that kind of people that we work with every day. Nobody really realizes what other people do, and everybody wants to do a good job, and our people all do a good job. This is the, this place on earth. They tell us to quarantine us here and not leave. I'm okay with that. I'll stay right here. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Keith. All right, Commissioner Robertson, anything, sir?
What do we know about Sudden Link?
What do we know about Sudden Link? I had an email today with the attorney that we've hired, and we are going to discuss it hopefully at the next court meeting or the first meeting in August, where she will tell us our options, and we'll have to do it in executive session because it entails potential litigation.
Okay.
We're going to do it by Zoom.
I'm just getting a lot of people to ask me about that, and...
Well, the pandemic, but part of the problem is, there's a couple factors. One, and so the public will understand this, even if we can help on the TV side, we have no ability to have any, to, to force Sudden Link to do anything on the internet side, because it's about as many complaints are on the internet side, if not more, than on the television side. And according to our retained counsel that's an expert on FCC regulatory matters, only the FCC has the legal authority to regulate internet. Counties, states, municipalities have no legal authority to regulate internet service at risk solely within the purview of the Federal Communications Commission. So even if we can straighten out some of the television, another issue is, and I don't want to go into too much detail, but you do have the option to terminate the franchise agreement. There's, the problem there is there's no guarantee that somebody's going to come in and, and pick up that service territory, and likely will be bogged down in federal court and litigation with them for quite some time, and it'll be very expensive.
Well, it just seems like they keep raising the rates, and they get less service.
We, you know, we have no, as I understand it, no ability to regulate rates even, but we can discuss that with, with Ms. Aine when we have the opportunity to discuss how we're going to proceed with this.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thacke?
Judge, I don't really have much to say, and I just, just want to let people know that I did receive the lease for the property in the Flatwoods, and Ms. Hall does have that now.
Good.
Personally handed and delivered that to her today. Other than that, that's all, Judge.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Booth?
I don't have much tonight, Judge. I just want to thank all of our employees for what they do do, and they do have to go through a lot, especially in the solid waste. I think that's one thing that maybe we should get a chance to do or whatever. I think their solid waste employees needs to have uniforms of some type or something where they deal in so much of that. Maybe we can help them out somewhere in that. But other than that, I know there's a lot of people vacation. Hopefully be safe, be careful, especially during this pandemic, and that's all I have today, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner. First of all, I'd like to remind everyone that next week, the solid waste collection schedule will return to the normal days. Tomorrow, the Friday pickups, tomorrow's Saturday, the Friday pickups will be picked up tomorrow, Monday will resume normal schedule. I want to thank Chuck and Stephanie and Judge Hickman for all the work that they've done to try to help come up with a plan to deal with these holiday pickups. Since I've become judge, became judge a year and a half ago, people were mad because, you know, holidays, and particularly those people who had Monday pickup like myself, when you miss two or three pickups in a row, particularly during the Christmas, New Year's holiday, it's a, it's a huge problem. So we now have a plan in place to address holiday missed pickups. So, we now have a plan in place to address holiday missed pickups. So, that way, I think Stephanie, is it fair to say that we had very few complaints over this, which is unusual. Most people were livid because, you know, the missed pickups. We fixed that and we're going to continue this program. It's worked out fantastic. One other thing I want to, to mention is the governor has issued a, an emergency declaration and ordered masks to be worn in public, in businesses, and in places you can't maintain social distancing. A lot of people are upset about that. I'm one of the ones that very much dislike having to wear a mask, but if it means not getting someone else sick, not getting sick myself, not bringing something home to my family, to me, it's worth, worth doing. And Tammy Riley, who's the Pike County Health Department Director, said we did have two new cases today. We have a total of 122 confirmed cases in Pike County and it appears that some of the ones that have been most recently, there's a whole bunch of tests pending. There are about 350 tests pending that they don't have results. What we don't want to see happen here is what's happened like in Miami, Florida, where now 33.5% of the people who are tested are testing positive. And it also seems that the people who have traveled to Florida and North Carolina and other places, South Carolina, and they're coming back, we're having more symptomatic patients. So, early on, a lot of the people who were tested were tested asympt, asympt, well, they were asymptomatic. Now, virtually all the patients are symptomatic. And, you know, discussing this with my wife, who's a physician, she's very concerned. She's had, you know, she's seen folks who have, have been diagnosed and it is alarming with some of the symptoms. And, you know, our healthcare providers are on the front line, but our solid waste workers too. I did mention at the last court meeting, we had a lady that was kind enough to call and advise us that both her and her husband had tested positive and wanted our workers to know where they lived so that they would take extra precautions when handling their trash. So, it is a serious issue. Some people say, well, you're infringing my rights. Well, historically, governments have substantial authority to limit or to regulate or impose restrictions during pandemics, including quarantines. We don't want to see that happen here. If people will maintain social distancing, they'll wear their masks, they'll wash their hands and use hand sanitizer, we can keep this under control here. We don't want to see happen here what's happening in Texas where you see hospitals overrun, ICUs maximum capacity, same thing in Alabama, Florida. So, please, just be considerate of others, wear a mask. It's annoying, I know, but it may save your life and it may save the life of someone you really care about. And even if it not necessarily saves their life, if it keeps them from getting really sick, it's worth doing it. So, we hopefully, if you've not been tuning in, the health department is doing periodic updates on their Facebook's page. We're not going to do press conferences every day. You know, that's, it's redundant. You know, people get immune to what's being said. If there are any substantial changes in the situation with COVID-19, we'll ask Dr. Foddy and Ms. Riley, myself, and, and whoever else is appropriate for the meeting to get that information out to the public. Last, we are taking applications for the small business grant program. That small business grant program will provide grants of up to 2,000, up to 7,500, 2,000 up to 7,500 for eligible businesses. Preference is given to businesses in the county. So, please, take the time to look into it. You can call the courthouse, we can give you the information. You can call Ms. Fanover, you can call the judge's office and we'll probably convene the committee once we have a sizable number of applications to. You will have to come before the committee with documentation to show that you have had a financial loss. It's limited to businesses, I think we, 50 or less. You have to be in compliance with the solid waste ordinance. You can't have a big solid waste bill that's unpaid. You can't be delinquent on your occupational net profit tax. So, those are just a couple of the requirements. If you are registered, your business is registered with the Secretary of State, it has to be in good standing and it has to be a business that was in, in business before, I think we said March 1st. So, those are just some of the requirements, but we are trying to do some things to help our local businesses that are struggling. We will probably know the extent of the economic fallout for local businesses in the county tax base in, at the end of July, was that, probably end of July 1st of August. And of course, the first court meeting in August, we hope to have an update on that. I did skip over one person that probably does have something and that's Judge Hickman. Okay, well, I, I didn't want you to think I was skipping over you on purpose. Does anyone else have anything that would like, they would like to bring before the court? All right, with that being said, I'd ask Commissioner Booth to say the benediction for us.
Good Lord, as we come before you again, dear heavenly Father, Lord watch over us as all of us travel to our homes and keep us safe, dear heavenly Father. Lord watch over our county, continue to bless it. Lord watch over our country, dear heavenly Father. And Lord bless all those that's sick, that's inflected, dear heavenly Father. And, and so might your heavenly fathers, there's sickness and death all around us. Lord comfort those families also, dear Lord. Go with us in Jesus' name and pray, amen.
Amen. Is there a motion for adjournment? Motion by Commissioner Robertson, second. Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.